We'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Salem City Council for October 24. And would the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Bennett.
Here.
Councilor Tesler.
President.
Councilor Nanki.
Here.
Councilor Claussen.
Here.
Councilor Dickey.
Here.
Councilor Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Cannon.
Yes.
Councilor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now open our meeting with a few minutes of Councilor comment. If we have councilors who would like to make a brief comment, is anyone requesting time to comment this evening? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My chair just deflated itself again. So, too much fun. I just want to say thank you to staff for getting the HTC Android platform back up so our email can come directly through. I had it and then it went away because of some software updates that Sprint or Android did themselves, and it's just nice to be back with everybody all day long, so.
Wonderful. We're glad to have you back with us. Councilor Claussen.
Hey, I just wanted to make a quick shout out. One of our ex-city councilors is on the world champion tennis team for age group 60 to 65. Paul Wolf, he used to sit in Laura's chair, is on his way back from Turkey on -- oh, Brad's chair, sorry. He's on his way back from Turkey on Tuesday night. He's ranked number one in tennis for his age group in the U.S., and their tennis team just won nationals in Turkey, so, pretty cool deal.
And what is his name?
Paul Wolf.
Paul Wolf.
How are you related to him?
Very interesting information. Thank you.
Are you related to him?
Okay, other comments? All right. I have a quick comment, and that is that at the -- almost the first page in your packet, if you have the agenda, and for those who are watching at home, the -- what we call the fly sheet, all the upcoming public hearings and work sessions and future agendas, et cetera, et cetera, there will be several changes to this, and so the city manager, Linda Norris, tells me it will be on the website on Wednesday, so watch for updates, additions. I don't think we made any deletions. I think we just keep adding.
I think we just added.
Excellent. We love that.
We love that, yes. Okay, so watch for that. Councilor Tesler.
I had a quick one. On Saturday, I participated into a 5K for Women Ending Hunger, and I was pleasantly surprised to see Councilor Thomas there, who did not recognize me for a long time, I think. Because I was in disguise, shall we say. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell her thank you for doing that, the registration, because it was cold, and so, thank you. And that was a lot of fun, and I think they did make some money, from what I understand, and so I was happy to participate and do that. And I can run in a pretty ridiculous costume now for three miles, so I was pretty proud of myself.
We will look forward to the photos.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I think we'll get our meeting started. Tonight, we don't have reports from boards, commissions, committees. Do we have public comment? Do we have anyone signed up? We do. All right. We have three people, and it starts with Peter Booth. So, Peter, would you please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, and state your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm used to waiting until 9:30 to speak, so. Excuse me. Peter Booth, Executive Director of the Willamette Heritage Center at the Mill, work at 1313 Mill Street, reside at 280 Culver Street South. Here to speak about the resolution to make changes in the C-1 policy for the transient occupancy tax. I want to first acknowledge the success the TOT program has had over the past decades. Tourism has grown tremendously, doubling since 1991, and the number of cultural organizations in Salem has also grown tremendously, as evidenced by the number of groups who apply for the various special event grants, capital grants, and operating grants every year. I know that my own museum would not be a treasure without the many past years of TOT support. Plus, part of its success has been the well-balanced approach. There's no golden bullet to tourism and cultural heritage in the area, no one thing, be it softball, conference centers, successful marketing, or our museum brings all the tourists. It's a whole package that creates the overall cultural-rich environment that surprises our guests and brings in visitors. Myself, being from another area, it originally -- it gives you a very interesting perspective to the many treasures Salem has, our area has, and the TOT program over the past couple decades has gone a long ways to promote that. Second, I want to support the TOT Board itself. It's a volunteer staff that you all have selected, and they're trying to do a great job in balancing these very many interests, the cultural needs, the heritage needs, in our communities. And they have worked hard over the past couple months to address the many concerns that they've been made aware of. I would love to get my own board to work as hard as they've done the past few months. And third, I want to support the TOT's Board recommendations in establishing a competitive grant system for operating grants. I think the competitive operating grants are best for the whole cultural tourism sector in Salem. It instills a degree of accountability, and it rewards excellence. Some may ask if I myself would be worried and losing out, however, I need to take a look at the larger picture. My museum will prosper if overall cultural tourism grows, and rewarding for excellence will help do that. Fourth, I want to caution that this is not used as an excuse to reduce the TOT, in the sense that it is balanced as it is now, and I don't want to see any one of those areas reduced. It's a bigger picture, it's a bigger package, and not just one of them brings all the tourists. And second, or lastly, I want to caution that this isn't an excuse to judge success based solely on heads and beds. I would rather it be judged on how each component builds a better cultural and heritage and recreational package in bringing tourism and making our community a better place to live.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Booth? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and giving us your comments. Okay, Carl Knudsen? Did I say your name correctly?
Knudsen, Claussen.
Knudsen, okay. Welcome, and please give your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Carl Knudsen. I reside in Ward 7. I'm here representing the Willamette Arts Center, which is in Ward 1.
Can you speak right up into the microphone? Good.
Hi. My name is Carl Knudsen. I live in Ward 7. I'm here representing the Willamette Arts Center, which is in Ward 1. I am the Executive Director of the Willamette Arts Center, and I would like to first start off by thanking the Cultural Tourism Promotion Board for the incredible amount of work that they've done putting together these proposals. I think they've really tackled a pretty huge amount in a very short period of time and really come up with a pretty good solution to a pretty tough problem. Of course, I'd also like to thank Kelly Jacobs for all of the hard work that she's done. She's really an amazing asset to all of us working here. Salem is really fortunate that we have a number of pretty incredible cultural institutions that really make up a pretty amazing fabric for what we do and what we're able to do, that not only benefits the public at large in creating a really great place for us to live, and a lot of wonderful things for us to do and experience, but also to be a part of the general tourism package that brings people to Salem and to this area that wants them to -- basically that drives them to come visit where they want to come see and do and experience what we have to offer, because we really have some amazing groups that are doing some pretty incredible things that are going on, that are really a part of a large-scale collaboration, that we really are, in a sense, all pulling the same wagon towards the same goal, which is increased tourism, which is a greater footprint and increased capacity, so to speak, for what we're able to do and what we're able to accomplish. And we're all really, I think, working together towards that goal with the assistance of funds like the TOT fund that really make a lot of our programs possible. I know that my organization would be a fraction of what it is now. We're a relatively new group. We've been in operation since about 2006, so we're about five years old, and we are where we are because of the support of the TOT fund and other groups like that, and the support of our, you know, cultural partners that have really stepped up and said, "There's a need for what you're providing, and we want to support you, and we want to do these sorts of things." So, I really want to, again, express my support for the TOT Board and what they've done. I think this is a way that we can bring some accountability and some, basically, metrics, and a lot of what they've done has really been helpful to me in writing towards what they're doing, because it really gives us a sense of, really, a goal that we can all sort of strive to work towards. And I appreciate that, that it's come forward. So, again, I want to thank them for all their hard work, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Knudsen? All right, thanks for coming down. And Pam Voracek is on the list. Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Pam Voracek. I am the Executive Director at A.C. Gilbert's Discovery Village at 116 Marion Street Northeast. Independently, before I heard their comments, I also want to thank the TOT for all the works that they've done, and a huge shout out to Kelly, who has unending and amazing support. She is an incredible city employee, and just should be proud to have her as well. I thank you for the TOT dollars that we have received, A.C. Gilbert's, in the past, and I also want to say that I am thoroughly in support of the changes to the C-1 policy, making the competitive process. The competitive process will align more closely with all the other granting organizations out there by rewarding those that do great work, and this in turn will continue to bring tourists to the Salem area and benefit those who live here. I do have one suggestion and a change to the rubric. I do propose changing some of the scoring. Currently, 20 points are allocated for increasing TOT revenues and increasing the estimated economic impact, yet only 15 points are allocated to the goal of enhancing the quality of life. I do understand the need to increase the fund, however, few of our organizations have the capacity to truly impact this fund. It is also very difficult to anticipate in advance the number of heads and beds, or the impact that we will have. If these two goals were weighted similarly, some of the organizations applying would gain some additional points, thus evening the playing field a little more. Also, if Salem residents don't appreciate who we are and what we do, where will they take their out-of-town guests? We know that many families attend our organizations. They stay with friends, or they stay with relatives, and this is, you know, calculated in the overnight economic impact, but we also have a lot of day tourism from friends and relatives. And according to Dean Renin and Associates, the Salem area alone, just Salem, generates $36.4 million from day tourism. So I do support the C-1. I support one change in the rubric, just equalizing day quality of life along with economic impact. And just as a fun side note, on Friday, I was talking to three people at our museum. They were adults there, without children. The woman had come from Southern California, based on an article from Sunset Magazine from the year 2000, that she had ripped out, and she said, "This time, on my visit to Salem, I'm going to make it to A.C. Gilbert's Discovery Village." And it was just a single-page article. Peter Fish did that. Sorry, had it opened. Just that single page, and she held on to it for 11 years.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
That's great. Are there questions for Mr. Voracek? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and speaking with us. All right, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 4.2A by Councilor Nanki, 4.2B by Councilor Bennett, 4.3A by Councilor Cannon, and 4.3D by Councilor Dickey.
What was the -- what were the last two, please? 4.? With -- by Cannon?
By Cannon.
Okay.
And D by Dickey.
4.3D by Councilor Dickey. All right. It's been moved to adopt the consent calendar. Excuse me. Peter?
B.
You want B?
Yeah.
And would you add 4.3B?
Yeah.
By an interim Deputy City Manager, Peter Fernandez.
By Bennett. We'll let Fernandez.
On behalf of the mayor.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez.
All right. It has been moved by Councilor Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett, seconded by Councilor Cannon. Thank you. To adopt the consent calendar with polls of 4.2A by Councilor Nanki, 4.2B by Councilor Bennett, 4.3A by Councilor Cannon, and 4.3D?
B.
B. 4.3B.
Bennett.
And D.
And D.
D and D?
All right, 4.3B and D.
We can just move forward.
Is this right? Actually, we're just putting the whole consent calendar under special items. All right. Is there discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we will, let's see here, move to the Special Orders of Business, and we'll take up these polls, one by one. We have 4.2A. Councilor Nanki, would you like to discuss this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Claussen. Is there discussion?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, staff, for putting out the email today that describes a little more. It still didn't quite get to the question that I had. The monies are grant funds that are coming to us. Is it our practice or requirement to move those monies through the city, through the contingency fund? It was hard to tell, are we committing dollars before we actually get the grant monies, or what exactly are we doing money-wise?
What we need to do is give appropriation authority to the department to spend this new revenue that comes in, and the way we can do that, there are two ways. One is we can give appropriation authority for moving general fund contingency money to the account, and then reimbursing that. Essentially, that money will come back from the grant funds at the end of the year, or we can do a supplemental budget. And so what we're doing here is moving the general fund contingency, the $24,000 and a few more dollars. Then we'll have the grant funds that will come in, and at the end, that money from general fund contingency that moves over will just move back into general fund contingency at the end of the year. So the only additional money that we're spending is the additional grant money that we've been awarded.
And follow up on -- so that money will come to us when?
Actually, it may have, Ms. Snubell, did you find out today? We may have just received it, or we will receive it very shortly. And essentially, we pay the funds out, and then two weeks later, we get reimbursed.
Okay. And then one final question on that. It goes back into general fund contingency, but it says unappropriated ending balance.
Well, that's part of what the unappropriated ending balance is, is it includes general fund contingency dollars that we have not spent.
There was just confusion. I want to make sure everybody understood where the money was coming from and how it was being spent, and that it's not actually coming out of our contingency funds, which I don't like doing as a matter of practice either, because we're going to need those contingency funds.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Claussen.
I think the city manager answered the question, which was, are we spending the money before we get the grant?
No.
See what I'm saying?
Marilyn Daly, could you come and just talk about the process of how the funds are spent?
Marilyn Daly, Center 50-plus manager. This is a federal grant that we have been awarded, the $147,000 originally, and it pays for stipends for seniors to go into the schools and do a reading program. It's an intergenerational mentoring program to help reading, improve reading, preschool through fifth grade. We do, we draw, get those funds through reimbursement project process monthly, and that happens every two weeks as we expend any funds. But we are guaranteed and have been awarded that grant up to the new amount of $170,000. Those are funds have been awarded to us and are reimbursed monthly.
So, Councilor Claussen, what we do is we pay the amount, and then we're reimbursed from the grant two weeks later. So in essence, we have that two-week lag for the payment.
Okay, and I'm just wanting to make sure we've got a real good guarantee that we're getting reimbursed.
Yes.
But it sounds like we are.
We've received a warrant.
And it's quickly, on a short window.
This is the second year of the grant, and we received all of our funds for the previous budget year.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion on the floor. It was moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Claussen. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion to adopt the staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to 4.2B. I believe that Councilor Bennett brought that out for us?
I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, we move, and I'm not sure how to say this exactly, but that we schedule this as a work session for the city council on November 10th with a public hearing on November 14th.
Second.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I'm just checking with the city.
All right. Is that good? All right.
He gave it the Randall Seal of Approval.
I'm learning to check to the right and check to the left here. We're okay.
I think Councilor Nanki has a question.
Yes, I'm going to call for discussion in just a minute. So it's been moved by Bennett and seconded by Cannon. Is there discussion?
Okay.
Councilor Nanki?
Well, he wants to speak to his motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the amending the council policy, C-1, which has obviously had a great deal of work done on it, that was complimented, I think, by each of the speakers this evening. I'm sure each of us would second their comments. That's a tremendous project. I've been involved in that from the TOT Board side of it, trying to work on C-1, and it is a very complicated policy. One of the concerns that I have is that we didn't have our work session, if you'll recall, on this issue, and I think it's one that's important enough, it's one that takes an inordinate amount of our time at times during the budget process. And I am suggesting we have at least a good explanation of what's there, particularly when we have requests to change it. And I think Pam gave a good description of why we might want to change some of the weighting, but I'd like to hear a full discussion of it and have it with councilors, and then have a public hearing, make sure we've got it right, and do it so we don't have to have lengthy public hearings during the budget hearings, and then during the city council decisions to approve the TOT budget, which is what we've been through before. And I think in this way, with really, a really targeted investment of our time, we'll know what we're doing, we'll have, hopefully, some agreement, we'll have found whatever agreement there is there, particularly working with the folks who receive the dollars, and be able to come into the budget cycle, get this thing through without the issues we had last time, and the time before, and the time before, and the time before on back that tend to snag us on one of the smallest parts of the budget, expending the most amount of our time and energy trying to resolve, where we're dealing with just a few hundred, well, yeah, a few hundred thousand dollars. So I hope you'll agree with me that this is a better strategy for dealing with this issue.
Thank you. Councilor Nanki, and then Councilor Tesler, and then Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It sounded like a work session on the 10th followed by a public hearing on the 14th. So what day is the work session?
A Thursday. It's already scheduled.
It's a Thursday.
Yeah, it's, oops, sorry, Mayor.
No, no, go ahead.
And are we doing something else that Thursday night?
It is the Thursday night. If you check the fly sheet, which is going to be revised, but that's not going to be revised, we have a session on Thursday, November 10th, which actually is going to be the economic presentation, and that will include the council and the budget.
Oh, by Mr. Dewey.
Right. So that, in that case, we are doing it on a Thursday. Right?
Yes.
Right? All right.
And the work session would be prior to or after?
Right after Mr. Dewey's presentation, so that will be from about 6:00 until about 7:00 or 7:30, and then we'll have the work session right after that.
My only concern is, we got a lot of information that would have been presented at the work session. I've reviewed that, and I'm happy with understanding that, so I didn't necessarily want to slate a full hour to talk about that again, so if we're doing it after, we can basically close that up more rapidly than potentially one hour, and focus more on if the council has questions of staff in that regard.
Right. That would be fine. All right, now let's see, who is next here? I believe Councilor Tesler.
Thank you. You know, I really, again, would like to echo the praise to Kelly, who has just, you know, performed a pretty much monumental task overhauling this. And, you know, I have gone through this material and pretty much tried to self-educate myself enough to be dangerous, but, you know, as part of my employment, I do develop scoring criteria and rubrics, and these rubrics disturb me. And I think Pam Voracek pretty much hit the nail on the head about why the rubrics disturbed me. I think that it's really grossly unfair to judge everybody by the measuring stick of heads and beds, and because it does not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Many of the things that TOT supports are for the cultural edification of Salem residents. That's part of the mission of TOT. Should people that bring in more heads and beds get an asterisk, certainly, they should get an asterisk. Should they get 20 points? You know, this is what's disturbing to me, because I feel that the organizations like, you know, Mission Mill and, you know, A.C. Gilbert, and the many other things that I've attended in this community that have been supported by TOT, would be grossly misjudged by the application of that rubric. And I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that rubric being used to measure everyone. It's something that is not an accurate measurement of the return to the community. I think there's three things in TOT that could probably prove beyond a doubt that they do provide tourism revenue that does support a lot of other organizations, and should they get an extra nod, yes. So we need to figure out how we can do that, how we can do these scoring and criterias and rubrics so that it's fair to all. And colleagues, this is extremely important, the TOT fund. This is what makes Salem interesting. These are the things that are supported, the Patriot Flag Day, all of the little things that are supported through this money. This is an issue that you really should study and pay attention to, because without this fund, we would not have many of the things that make our community an interesting place to live, and benefit the children in our community, too. So please, please do take it seriously and look at the scoring criteria and rubrics. It is very complicated, but I'm sure that everyone here can get through it.
Thank you. Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand, we're going to conduct a work session, and I think, and maybe someone from the cultural and historic tourism promotion.
Advisory Board.
I wish we'd come up with a different name, Councilor Bennett.
I know.
Maybe we could discuss that in the TOT work session, but could somebody from the Board be here to help answer some questions that I have about, you know, I'm very leery of changing Board recommendations. I'm happy to consider some of the thoughts that have been discussed here, but again, boy, these are, these are folks who've put in hundreds of hours to bring this to us, and now all of a sudden, I'm a little leery that we're already in budget season and we're undoing their recommendations. So I want to be very, I just want to make sure I understand that during the work session, they went through some exhaustive process to come up with this methodology. I just want to make sure we can have an explanation of that so that we can consider the question of approving this resolution. Is that possible in our work session? Yeah, I think anytime we've got a major policy decision, it's good for the public to see it on a work session, but then have the benefit of participating through the public hearing process. So I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Cannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the motion as well. I just want to be assured by staff that all of the people who applied last year for a TOT grant, as well as all the people who received a TOT grant, would be given notice of the public hearing. So as Counselor Bennett said, we don't go through this process when we have the budget committee and when we have the City Council meeting. So can I be assured that that would happen?
Yes, sure can.
Thank you very much. I also would comment on Counselor Tesler's comments. I totally agree. So we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right, let's see, we are to Counselor Claussen.
Just a quick question on timeliness. If we do this work session and public hearing, then we would have two more meetings after that before something would be activated? Is that going to be too late for this next budget go around?
It won't be too late for the budget process, but at the end of your questions, I would like Ms. Jacobs to come to the podium and just talk about the cycle that we're in and what delay this might mean.
Right, because I'm concerned about getting this out there on the street for people to even be able to apply and then get it reviewed and then get it put into the budgets. We're going to be up against the window here and are closing that window real quick. So if the issue is more straight up with the TOT revenues and EEI, maybe it says increasing TOT revenue or increasing overall estimated economic impact. It looks like we've got the ability to measure estimated economic impact. So that would just be an interpretation of the score. So I don't, I don't know if we have as big an issue as what we're worried about or not. It does say and economic impact. So anyway, I'm worried about the window, I guess, maybe, and that might be an answer Kelly can give us, and it might not be a bad idea to consider it tonight.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two issues, one which is just escaped me. But in regards to the timing, I think we all have looked at it. How many, oh, I got the other one. If we're going to notify those people of the work or the public hearing, will they also be notified for the work session? Because that's where a lot of the discussion and interpretation type stuff from staff and the board would come in.
Yes, I understood that to be what Counselor Cannon was asking.
Which will actually let people know so that they're not blindsided at a public hearing if, in fact, we choose to go that direction. The other side of that, were all of those same people aware of the policy changes that were on our agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So the folks that showed up or the folks that had something to say, since I didn't see any other information come at us saying, you know, we're very concerned about this. So it may just be one issue in regards to the scoring rubric. As far as whether or not we want to shoot a whole public hearing or a work session as well.
I don't think I quite followed what you were saying.
If everyone was aware that we were going to be discussing this and actually potentially voting on changing it tonight.
Yes.
I didn't see a giant outcry down here saying, have a public hearing because we're very concerned with what you're doing. Those people came down and said, everything is great, one suggestion on possibly looking at that rubric to balance out economic versus quality of life. So do we need a full public hearing on that, or do we need to have discussion with maybe some of the TOT board, get their rationale for why they scored it the way they did, and then make the policy decision on what the numbers should be between those two items?
Yeah.
Because I don't know how long it takes to schedule a public or the work session, public hearing. It's a lot of time if the time isn't warranted and it's more of a policy decision.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just kind of an answer to the previous two speakers. I talked with the city manager about this to make sure that our timing would work for both the budgeting process as well as the granting process, that we're up against it. I mean, we're pushing it a little bit, but we didn't have a work session because we were unable to, and myself included, unable to get together that night and put together a quorum in order to have it. And I still feel this issue is one, and having been through the budget for many years, it is the one issue you can almost be guaranteed if the numbers don't work out, you're going to have a crowd. I would just as soon be, do this upfront, particularly when you're changing something that has to do with the allocation policy and practices and strategy for this organization. I, for one, want to be able to look those folks when they come in, and all of you have been through this, when they come in and say, well, I didn't get as much as I should, and every member of their board calls you, emails you, and complains. This is, this is just to get the, to clear the road upfront rather than at the back end when we make very bad, quick decisions. Now, that'd be my opinion, what we did last time, but I was on the losing side of that vote because I wasn't, you know, for whatever reason. This time, I'd like to resolve it upfront. That's all I'm thinking. Or partially resolve it.
Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Claussen. Did I miss anybody on this side? Counselor Dickey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of in response to that, I would hope that everyone has looked at said scoring and knows kind of where they fall in. I don't necessarily think that's the case. And as we put this into place and come into budget season and go through the grant cycle and they see how much money they're actually going to get versus what they might think they were going to get, we may very well have them all down here at budget season. Anyway, we see a lot of people down here at budget season saying, well, my criteria was kind of like this, but can you make an exception and give us the money? So I don't, I do want to have it in place and through to where we have that potential to, you know, say this was a process and we followed it. But I don't necessarily know if it will actually help us time-wise down the road.
Counselor Claussen?
I like, I like what Counselor Bennett just mentioned. I'm just trying to streamline this upfront. I would make a strong request that the entire board of the CTPAB is there. I don't like it when we're trying to make a policy and trying to change something like Counselor Clem said, and these guys have worked on it a ton. And I'm frankly a little disappointed, nobody's here tonight. I mean, this is a big culmination of their work and.
There are several behind you.
Okay, so is there a chance we can ask them for input?
Well, I don't think.
Can they do that during deliberation?
Not tonight.
Okay, more the need for the work session then, and I would ask them to please come to that work session so we can hear their way in, because I frankly don't know a ton about this personally, so I would love that expertise.
Right, now let's see. Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to the maker of the motion, is it the scoring criteria that's really sort of the main subject that you want vetted, or is it just the whole thing? I mean, are we really going through all this to talk about the one item? If that's it, I just, let's be upfront about it and make sure we know.
No, I want to go through the whole policy.
All right.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a process question, because this will be a work session that follows our forecast. And so will this be in this room and will it be televised? I have a neighborhood meeting that night that I haven't been able to get to for a couple months.
We are having, if I'm correct, let me just look here for a second. I think it is in this, it is in the council chambers, so we can do both here in the council chambers and they can both be televised.
Let's see, Counselor Cannon, are you raising your hand?
I am. Could I be recognized?
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam.
No.
Hi, I'll raise my hand higher next time.
All right, okay, that's good.
I agree with Counselor Bennett's approach to this, and let me tell you why. Last year, I was on the prevailing side because we didn't have enough money, and I said we're going to cut it to the amount of money that we have. And every person who's got a special interest in this community came out of their shoes. I don't know how many emails I erased, but I erased a whole bunch, only to put them into my safe category, of course.
Thank you.
But the whole concept here, got to get everybody's attention, but the whole concept here is that we came back and we had additional money that came in in the last quarter to fill the funding. But we either have to go with what the TOT board says or make adjustments now, and then when it comes down to actually doing our job, then I think it's going to be pretty perfunctory. If the scoring's done, we know what the scoring is, we have agreed to it in advance, then it's a single item, it's done. So I support this very much.
All right. I know that you would like to have, I'd like to make a comment before we do that. And I shared Counselor Bennett's concern this morning when we talked about this item on the agenda. And my concern is that we do not have the TOT board going down the same road they went down last year, where it appeared that decisions were made and promises were made, expectations were out there as to how much money organizations were going to receive in any of, in all of the categories. And then we were trying to make very tough budget decisions. Last year's tough budget decisions are going to be pale in comparison to the coming year's budget decisions. So I just encourage the TOT board to not be assuming that life is the same this year as it has been last year. We are in a new economy, and it's going to be serious and it's going to be tough. So that's my plea from here. You can come and all visit us again and again and send us emails and telephone us, but do understand, this is not going to be deja vu this year. So that's what I wanted to be sure I got on the record. Now, you want Kelly to come down and talk?
I would if she could just come up to the podium in case there are other questions. But one of the things I wanted to say, and of course Kelly and the board has this process in place with timing in place where the application process would have begun November 2nd. So one of the things that maybe would help with the process and not delay it too much is if the application process could go ahead and start, but decisions about funding and scoring wouldn't happen until after the work session and after the public hearing. Would that work, Kelly?
I think it would.
Well, I have a question about that then, because I was under the impression that the city manager presents a budget, and that budget carries the suggested allocations and dispersments, et cetera, et cetera. Until the city manager has done that, I fail to understand how the TOT board knows that it can begin to make any decisions about the dispersments. What am I missing?
The way the process works is that councils ask their advisory board here to, with council policy, to go ahead and take applications and look at the applications and make decisions about priorities. And then they give that to us, to me, as we're putting the process together. And then I put the budget together with that information and information about our budget forecast and other direction from the council. And so sometimes you'll see that we'll have a recommendation from the advisory board and then a separate recommendation from the city manager. So the question here is to, because we're delaying this now a month past where we thought we would be, if we can go ahead with the application process, but just not do the ratings or anything, but at least get that big step finished before your work session and before the public hearing.
All right, I have a couple of questions on the floor. Would you like Kelly to speak first, or shall we take the councilors' questions?
I think the council's questions.
Okay, Counselor Claussen and then Counselor Clem.
The only issue I would see with that suggestion would be, in the past, we've had one process for applying and the board would make a cursory, not a cursory, but a review, and then, I don't even know what the awards were based off of in the past. This amendment to C1 would completely change how they apply. It would make their application look different, it would be structured different, I think, because they're going to be shooting for points now. And they're going to, they, before they can write their application, they need to see what we're scoring. We might, the November 10th and 14th might reveal that we delete a whole piece or we add a whole new piece in. So if they've started, I would hate to put something out there and ask them to start and then have to redo it, so.
If you think there would be significant changes, we should wait. But then I'd like Kelly to address what that timing would be.
Sure. Kelly Jacobs, I'm staff support to the Culture and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board. This will make for some interesting timing. The applications were intended to go out November 2nd and were due back on December 8th, which during that time of the year, it's very difficult for the board to do much work on the applications. So what generally happens is staff support does a technical review, which is part of that process, and I get back to the applicants and let them know if there are any technical difficulties with their applications so that they can address those things so that perhaps the council doesn't hear about them later. And this is something that, part of the process that the board implemented a few years ago. So during the month of December, I'm working with the applicants on the technical review, then I compile the application notebooks for the board, and then they spend January doing the review of the applications and doing some initial scoring. Then the board planned to have an open meeting where they actually talked about all of the applications, talked about the scoring, the rubric, did a lot of discussing in an open meeting so that the applicants would have the opportunity to listen to that conversation and understand the questions that were being asked by the board. And then the board would go back and finalize their individual scoring. And so this all has to be done by March for the budget, for the proposed budget. So delaying this further does create some compression of that schedule and will make it a bit more difficult, certainly.
I believe Counselor Cannon, Clem has a comment.
Yeah, and I think that would be unfortunate. I do want to make just two comments, that we don't vote on the budget till June, so, and given the mayor's emphasis on not giving any impression of status quo, it may make sense to wait. I will tell you, having said that, though, and having been involved with the process last year, I can't tell you how many people appreciated the ability to vet their application technically wise, completeness wise, with Kelly. So you counsel, if we're going to do this, we're going to have to sort of help staff and the board reset people's expectations for how timely we work this into the budget next year. So if we don't deal with it by March, we'll have to deal with it by April. But I don't want to sacrifice the ability for staff to interact with applicants because it was absolutely, from applicants who received nothing, their praise was high, given that sort of application process, and I don't want that sacrificed at all. I don't, I don't have a problem delaying a month because we still, we have till June to approve the budget, but I wouldn't want to delay any more than that. And I wouldn't want to give the expectation that it's status quo. So I think we can delay it for a month from then.
Okay, there, no, okay. Oh, Counselor Nanki?
It's because I'm feeling rather small, the hydraulic cylinder on my chair is malfunctioning. I can go all the way up the top and then I'll bounce all the way down, but I'm not feeling small in the Steve Martin way. Two questions. One, essentially, we're extending this 12 days.
Exactly.
If we could extend, you know, their return in by a week, that's seven, that basically is, we lose, you know, seven days in the process for them. But more significantly, I mean, we're changing things around fairly significantly. Is this the exact same review period that we used last year with a different system? And can we actually even fit it all in based on the changes that are proposed?
No, I think it, I think it's very doable, and the board has made, made it very clear that they intend to spend the time in open session discussing, discussing the applications. So I think that there is nothing but dedication on the part of the board to ensure that this process works.
I'm just concerned if it's running the same timeline, but we messed around with all the stuff in it, that it, that it might be a little more complicated than we expect.
All right, Counselor Claussen?
Just a quick question on the order then. Could we vote after the public hearing on the 14th and just implement this?
Yeah.
Or does it have to go to the next meeting because it was a public hearing?
We can vote the 14th, I believe.
Yes. All right.
That'd be the intention.
All right. All right. Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and I remember that Counselor Bennett made a motion. I don't remember, did, thank you. Counselor Cannon seconded the motion. We've had discussion.
Has that been a public hearing?
Is there any further, well, practically has been. All right, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Counselor Cannon seconded the motion. We've had discussion.
Has that been a public hearing?
Is there any further -- well, practically has been. All right. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motion? And let's restate the motion, just so that everybody knows. Counselor Bennett, would you like to restate the motion?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move that the council hold a work session on November 10th, and a public hearing on November 14th on amending the council policy C1.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see. We have another item, and we're just working our way down the list.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
7:30 for public hearing.
All right. We'll switch to public hearing, and then we'll go back to our other items from the consent calendar. Public hearing this evening, let's see, with the -- I believe we have a staff report on this public hearing?
Yes. Glenn Davis will be making the staff report.
Shall I go ahead and introduce?
Should we introduce? Yes.
Okay. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider preliminary declaration for urban growth area development permit number 11-01, located at 1936, 1950, and 1980 Wallace Road Northwest. This will be a new hearing, and will result in a decision that supersedes outrun by the planning administrator. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward applicable criteria found in Salem Revise Code, Chapter 66, the Salem Transportation System Plan, the Public Works Design Standards, and the following City of Salem master plans: storm water management, water system, wastewater management, and comprehensive park system. Testimony may also address any other criteria a person believes applies to the decision. The record of the planning administrator action with respect to this request is part of the record before council. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing, in person, or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes an appeal to the Land Use Department of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis, you have 10 minutes.
Okay.
For your presentation. Welcome.
I want to use all 10. Good evening, Mayor Peterson and councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm the chief development engineer in the Public Works Department, and I won't repeat what she just said about the project here. So, I would like to enter the staff report and the attachments into the --
Can you speak right up into the microphone?
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Okay.
So, my presentation has four components. First, a short description of the property itself and its surroundings, and then, next, I'll answer three basic questions. What is UGA permit? What are the conditions of approval? And then, what comes next in the development process? So, first, the property description. Here's a aerial photography -- a photograph of the site. We see it in the yellow here is a new multifamily housing development on Wallace Road. To the south, we see Orchard Heights Road, and to the north, you see Riverbin Road. And here in the bottom corner is a couple of the ballfields from Wallace Marine Park. So, we zoom in here on the property, again along Wallace Road. You see that the property is partially developed, with several residential dwellings. Properties to the north and the east are vacant, and there's several residential dwellings to the south. We also see the future marine drive here along to the east. And on this slide, I've added the city limits to show that a portion of the property is located outside those city limits, and we'll get to that here later in the presentation. Here's a photo of the frontage of the property, showing the dwellings. And I always like to point out that there's a median strip in the middle of the road that would restrict left turns coming from the north, turning left onto the property. So, next, what is UGA permit? UGA permits apply only to the urban growth area of Salem. And here's a map that shows, first, in the red is the urban growth boundary, the red outline, and in the pink is the urban growth area. The area in blue is the urban service area, and the urban growth area is the area between the urban growth boundary and the urban service area. So, in mathematical terms, since I am an engineer, the urban growth area is actually the UGB minus USA, or in pink on the screen here.
Although I don't see it in pink.
It's orange, well, it --
It's all the same color.
On my computer, in the office, it was pink. So, and this property is located in the orange area, which is, requires this UGA permit.
Inside the red line, but not blue.
And also, this process analyzes major and minor facilities, the five that you see on the screen. Major facilities are the large infrastructure. You'll see major streets, water reservoirs, pump stations, neighborhood parks. Minor facilities are the connections between a development and those major facilities. So, that's what this process analyzes. So, third, what are the conditions of approval for this application? On the screen here, we see that the major facilities are all adequate for this project, and for minor facilities, parks and water and streets are adequate. However, there are conditions of approval for storm water and for sewer. And I'll describe those here shortly. This map shows the existing drainage facilities in black, the natural drainage pattern for the property, slopes to the northeast, and then, the black line shows it draining to the north up to Harriet Drive. So, that's as the rain falls on the ground, that's where the water will go today. The applicant has proposed to construct facilities on-site that would reduce the runoff to the pre-existing conditions, therefore not changing the runoff characteristics, therefore not changing the way the water is conveyed off-site. In the conditions of approval, staff is allowed for the possibility that the engineer may not be able to limit the runoff, and would allow for a second option, which is shown here in green. And this alternate alignment would allow for the water to be drained directly to the Willamette Slough to the east. So, either to the north or to the east is an acceptable drainage path for this development. And now, for sanitary sewer, I'd like to point out that the existing sewer mains are shown here in orange, and in the black arrow here, you see the applicant has proposed to drain here to what's called Linda Lane. And this would require the installation of a pump station privately maintained by the applicant. And an alternate option for sewer is along the green line, and you see on the east here, that can make an alternate connection to the gravity main, and that would, staff would strongly recommend this connection, because, two reasons. One, it does not require a sewer pump to be maintained by this property owner. And second, it also benefits the properties to the south of this property here. There's a group of houses here that also would benefit from a sewer connection to the east. And I would also like to point out that either of these alignments on the screen here can require an easement from a neighboring property owner. So, the applicant is responsible to acquire those easements, and to compensate those property owners appropriately. However, if the applicant and the owners cannot come to terms on those easements, the applicant has the option to request the city to acquire those easements through eminent domain. And that need for eminent domain is also possible on the storm system as well, if they're not able to limit the runoff to its existing conditions. So, that could come back here if the applicant and the owners don't come to terms. And lastly, I'd like to describe the street system. There are no street conditions, but there's been a lot of comments and questions about streets. So, I'll point out that the UGA permit process must meet two criteria to be approved. One of them is that it needs to have an adequate link to the street system. Second is that the street in front of the property needs to be fully improved. And Wallace Road meets both of those criteria, therefore, there's no condition. However, there's been questions about access to the property. And access is not a subject of the UGA permit. So, but I would like to answer some questions that the neighbors have brought up. One of them is, all access approvals come from ODOT, because Wallace Road is a state highway. And I understand that the property owner has filed an application with ODOT, and ODOT has approved that application for a right-in, right-out-only access. That means a vehicle would, driving northbound, would have to, would enter the driveway only from northbound, and would exit only northbound, have no access from the north. And I mention this only because of the questions from neighbors, it's not a criteria of today's UGA permit. So, I will conclude briefly with a discussion of what comes next for the development process. So, here's the diagram showing the city approvals that will be needed for this proposed development. The portion of the property outside city limits takes the process to the right. That portion of the property will go through a public hearing, and the planning commission for the zone change, then next, a public hearing at city council for the annexation, who would then refer the annexation to the voters, and then ultimately, if the voters approve, to the state for finalization. The portion inside the city can go on the, where the down arrow shows, and can apply immediately for a site plan review, and concurrent design review, and then ultimately, building permit, and after construction, final occupancy. So, just to clarify the processes that this development has yet to go through. So, that concludes my presentation. And in closing, we recommend that the council affirm the planning administrator's decision with the conditions that are shown on the screen, summarized here. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Could you please, I have a question. Could you please go back to the diagram that showed the access? It's just, that's the one. And I realize that that's not a decision that this council will make, because that's an ODOT-controlled roadway, right?
Yes.
But just so that we understand, that if someone wanted to go to visit that property, they would, and they were driving north, that's easy, they make a right-hand turn. If they're driving south, in other words, they're coming from the north, driving south, how do they access that property?
They would have to make a U-turn, essentially. There are some U-turn permitted locations on Wallace Road.
Somewhere further down on Wallace Road.
So, come past it and turn around.
And then, if they come out of the property, they turn to the right, then they go, they travel north on Wallace Road, and then, do what? To end up going south.
You would do a U-turn also, and there are some U-turn permitted locations on Wallace Road.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Now, councilor questions?
We have a standard public hearing.
Oh.
Madam Mayor, is it allowable for neighborhood association?
The way we'll do this actually is the applicant can speak for 10 minutes, then the neighborhood association has five minutes, and then everyone else has three minutes. And then, the applicant rebuttal has five minutes. So, we have some people signed up to speak, and I don't know which of those categories the individuals would be in. Hans Thayer, is that, am I saying that right?
Is that the applicant?
Tigerson.
Tigerson?
Tigerson.
Tigerson. All right. And you are the applicant.
That's who we want.
All right. Welcome. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. And as I said, you have 10 minutes, so the amber light will blink, will come on at what?
Nine minutes.
Nine minutes, and then, when the red light comes on, your 10 minutes is up. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and council members. My name is Hans Tigerson. I work at 825 Harriet Drive Northwest in Salem, Oregon, and I reside at 2290 Michael Drive, Westland, Oregon. I am the applicant here tonight with this development, and I want to thank, first off, Glenn for kind of going over what we're facing tonight, and doing a good job at putting everything here on the overheads and laying them out, and also Pamela for putting the extensive work into this package. As a developer, I'm probably more comfortable talking about the development, but I think probably the main issues here tonight, people want to talk about is Wallace Road and other utilities access, and happy to address them. We do have ODOT-approved accessway onto the property, and I'm pretty much on the street in front meets the requirements. I know there has been some concerns with ODOT, and especially, West Salem Neighborhood Association, so I want to thank my team here. We kind of went to the work of trying to help address those by bringing an application for a speed zone request change with ODOT, and happy to give this to anybody. There's a real nice colorful flowchart of the 301 steps to go through. They've definitely, they want everybody to have done their homework, and so, the process is here. It starts with written requests from residents in the neighborhood. So, got the application here. Any other specific questions? I'd like to tell you that this will be Salem's flagship apartment community, I believe. The development to the north has been for the last couple of years, and this will be gated with full security, and as far as video monitoring, and I think it'll be a major plus to the West Salem neighborhood. Any questions?
Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I was reading through your application, and I was particularly intrigued by the verbiage that the nearest public storm facility is a slough to the east of the subject property. Are you planning on treating the storm water before it enters a slough, which is waters of the state? And you do know that the Willamette is listed for several different chemicals that come off storm water?
We are, we're going to be dealing with storm detention on-site. So, the slough is listed as a storm detention site by the city, but we're going to be dealing with storm detention on-site. So, we're going to be treating our storm water on-site and dealing with it there.
Can you go into detail about what you're going to be doing? Are you going to be using bio swells, or impervious concrete, or something like that?
Yeah, bio swells will be the number-one way of treating this storm, so.
Okay. And do you have any plans, do you pervise concrete, or curb cuts, or rain garden, anything like that?
You know, as far as impervious, there will be one area that we're looking at. It's kind of a, more of a landscape surface than, but, so.
Further questions? Nope. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
And appreciate your information. All right. Jared Noakes is next, if I'm reading this correctly.
Oh, it says Janet.
Is it Janet? Oh. All right. I'm sorry, Janet Noakes. And is she from, are you from the Neighborhood Association?
I am.
Okay. Good.
And my name is Janet Noakes, and I'm the land use chair for the West Salem Neighborhood Association. We're currently part of Ward 1, but we're going to be joining a little bit of Ward, we're eight now, and we're going to be part of Ward 1 as well. And if apartments keep building in West Salem, I think we'll get three councilors before long, at the rate we're going. So, and it has been a hot topic. And I will say, first of all, that we are not opposed to the particular development that's happening now. I think Hans has put together a good, it's a welcome addition to our neighborhood. What we are concerned about is the safety, both of our current citizens and those who move in. Wallace Road, whether the state approves this or not, and I don't know if the city council is ready to go to battle against the state of Oregon on these kinds of issues, but the new, this new development -- but the new, this new development of 108 units potentially will add 200 cars to that mix. We have, just to the north of that, another development that's coming onboard. We also have a large area up off of Orchard Heights where there will be 180 units going in, and those 180 units, many of them, will come down off of Orchard Heights, back in the back way, because it's a right, it'll be a right turn out for them onto Wallace Road, rather than having to cross Orchard Heights. So there's another, potential of another 300 cars coming in, and this is all going to happen in the next two years. So I just, when the state says it approves it, and the city kind of has to, well, I don't know, they don't have to roll over. I somehow want everybody to begin to step up and say, we can't just look at highways as traffic that moves, this is going through the middle of a neighborhood. And so I just, I'm asking for your help in looking at this. We have had concerns for car safety for a number, a couple of years now, we've been talking about it. Pedestrians cross there, kids run across four lanes of Wallace Road when they've missed their school bus. Now, the school bus is set up to pick them up on the right side of the street, and the city bus also. But when they're late, and they're just, all those kids are thinking about is, I'm going to school. And we have many instances of that, and a number of our residents are seeing it. I mean, it's not just, these aren't urban legends, they're actual facts. So those are the concerns that we have, and so we're asking, and the West Salem Neighborhood Association went on record as expressing concern for both cars and safety pedestrian in the Wallace Road corridor, and that's what we're sort of talking about, this long section there. And so I'm just throwing myself on your mercy to think about what you can do to work with the state, to change this, to have better safety access. We do not need 300 or 400 cars flipping a U up a little ways when we've got more cars coming at them. And that's what's going to happen if we don't figure out another method to serve here. Any questions? I see.
Thank you. Yes, I have several people who would like to ask you questions. Thank you very much. Let's see, we'll start with Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Cannon.
Thank you. Janet, one of the, what is it like out there right now in the morning and afternoon if you go out this far on Wallace Road? What's it, what's the, what's the traffic like out there right now, for people who haven't been out there in a while?
Traffic is going too fast, and I honestly, I'm, do you, anybody know what it's posted right there?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Well, you know that cars that are going 45 are really going 55. And it is four lanes, and I don't know how many people are coming into town at that same way, same place, I don't know where they're coming from. Most of them are going at, in the evening, going north, but there's still a lot of traffic coming south. And the same opposite in the morning and at night. And we have backups. I know that slowing traffic down often backs it up at lights, and if you get down as far as the light at Orchard Heights, or on down at Glen Creek, you can sit for four or five traffic, light changes before you get through. But we've got speed, and we've got numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Janet. I'm, so what is the official position in the Neighborhood Association? Are you against the application? Are you, I didn't follow, I'm sorry.
Well, we were really kind of wishy-washy on this one, because we are against, what, we don't want to oppose the development. This is a good development. This is, he's looking at the land in the right way, and it's a nice development that would happen. It just happens that it's on Wallace Road. And so I'm, what we're coming here and asking you to begin to do is to change what happens on Wallace Road for this development and the other developments that are coming. You know, if all was right in the world, Marine Drive, even though it isn't going to connect off the bridge, but it would still have a little stub back there, and they would all come into a light. And, but we're not, I don't know that you're in a position now to ask for that, to force that right now. But that's what would be the right thing to do.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so a follow-up on that, so the Marine Drive makes some sense. I guess I'm, I for one, I'm excited to get our bond work done out there in West Salem. I mean, that's going to be huge, and I would think that should help us quite a bit. I mean, as you know, that should help us quite a bit, getting some more capacity at those lights, so. So I guess maybe, maybe the condensed version of West Salem's, the Neighborhood Association's opinion is kind of neutral with some concerns, is kind of, might be a fair way of summarizing that.
That would, safely sum it up, but they are significant concerns in terms of pedestrian and car safety.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Cannon?
Janet, thank you very much for coming down tonight. Just so you know, the city of Salem offered a bill at the legislature, try to have cities, at least of our size, control the speed, and it was killed by ODOT without even having a hearing on it. We don't have the moxie at the legislature to get over the lobbying done by the in-house legislators, legislators or lobbyists from the Oregon Department of Transportation, and maybe somebody out there in TV land will help us with that. But I see your point, it's very well taken, and you're right.
Thank you. Maybe we should call neighbors into the state to make some fusses. How does the city, I can't ask you, well, yes, I can, I could say, how does independents drop, they have a state highway going through there, how do they get their traffic down to 25 miles an hour? And boy, are they enforcing it.
Okay, I guess that's a question for a different city council. All right, let's see. Counselor Dickey?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, that's a great segue. My question is just that, has ODOT been kind enough to have communication with the Neighborhood Association regarding your issues on Wallace Road?
We've not heard from them, but we do have a, I've joined with our traffic chair, Nick Forti, and we are pursuing it, and I'm going to take Hans's application. He said, I have good news for you, he says, but it requires paperwork. And we'll initiate that and start that, but that doesn't solve this access and those U-turns that are predicted for comings and goings.
Correct. I agree with you, but it sounds like this isn't an isolated development along, you know, it sounds like there are some already in the works, and so this is going to come back to us again and again as that area develops, so, you know, and I asked if, you know, ODOT was kind enough to communicate with the Neighborhood Association, because I know the Neighborhood Association would definitely be open to having that conversation with ODOT, and I would certainly hope that ODOT would be willing to have that conversation with you.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Janet. Prior to the meeting tonight, were you over at the work session on the bike and pad?
No, I didn't get to go. I have another volunteer task that I do on Mondays.
Because your counselor was speaking in regards to the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and wanting some kind of a pedestrian crossing area potentially, and I know we've talked about it several times in the past as well, as far as the actual span there, with no true pedestrian crossing and the need for that. From a Neighborhood Association, are you guys pushing for some kind of an actual pad crossing as well?
We have several areas along Wallace asked for, and, you know, we have, we have clear back close into town, our pedestrian bridge, and then the, oh my gosh, crossing four lanes of traffic right at, about Les Schwab. It'd be a perfect place for an ambulance to be located. We have several places along. It's not unlike commercial, we have, we have streets in Salem that are just not conducive to safe pedestrian crossings.
But, you know, going along with, your counselor is looking after you as well, and definitely at this, at least this one span is significant enough that I'm willing to vote for making something happen there as well.
Hooray. Thank you.
Okay, are there more questions for Janet? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your work on your volunteer work here and elsewhere.
Thanks.
Thank you. Herb Shaw is signed up to speak. And Mr. Shaw, I don't know if you're also with the Neighborhood Association or not. No, all right. Okay, then you have three minutes. Please give your name and address, and the amber light will come on at the end of two, and the red light comes on when your time is up.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
My name is Herb Shaw. My address is 1930 Wallace Road. I am, I'm opposed to this project, not because of the developer, because of two main issues. One of them was partially addressed with the traffic, traffic issues there. This spring, I presented a presentation to the, to the Planning Commission, trying to deny this, and in my suggestions, I suggested a signal at this intersection with left turn movement created in the median, where, which is now a planter, and ODOT rejected that because they wanted a safe refuge for pedestrians in that area. Doesn't make sense. I also suggested reducing the speed from 45 to 35 miles per hour in this area. And one of the reasons for that is, when you are northbound on Wallace Road, you come, you top the hill, you come off the hill, and you're really close to this intersection, and at 45, 55 mile an hour speeds, with any kind of inclement conditions, including rain, we have a lot of accidents out front for trucks and vehicles trying to get stopped for pedestrians crossing that unsignalized intersection. I also asked that there, if we're not going to do that, we have no left turn movements. I find out that that has been approved, but they told me that wasn't going to happen either at the time. The second reason, the second reason that I'm opposed to this is that I live down this private lane that is, is private. We have security there. Back up to the, ask me questions later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I will.
We have, we are private, we have security back there, we're not, we're not, we're secluded, and this is all going to disappear, because right across from my house is going to be a big parking lot. And so what I suggest is that some type of security screening be between that easement, that road in front of our place that serves three homes down there now, that there be a security on the north side of our, of our roadway, not only to screen for safety, to keep people out, but also just to block, block a parking lot that I now look at shrubs and trees, and it's beautiful, and now I'm going to be looking at a parking lot, and I don't appreciate that. The other one is a question, and I submitted this question to, to the city, and you will have copies of this. There is, and I have a question, the question is this, the proposal shows 24 units being built in the southeast corner, the lower right strip of this project. There's an easement, or at least there should be, an easement for a location for a sewer drain field for the property directly across the street. Do you have a pointer? Well, anyway, I can point this out when you ask questions later. This, the lot number 602, which is 1932 Wallace Road, just east of my property, has a drain field in that area, and this proposal shows that there are going to be units built right over that drain field. So I, my question is, how is this drain field going to be addressed? Because regardless of what happens, they're going to lose their sewer system.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up, but are there questions from councilors? Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Shaw, now can I ask?
You sure can.
Where the lane is and where your house is?
Okay.
Sorry, we don't have a red, you know, Glenn's got a pointer. Be careful with your eyes on that thing.
How do you turn it on? Is it?
There we go.
Okay. This, this right? Right there, right there is my place, and this right here. The house at six, at 1932 is right here. The drain field is in this area right here. Now, this is the lane right here, it goes clear through, it's paved, it's actually right across from there, from Linda Lane.
Okay. Is this the tractor lane that went farm used, or this has been a deliberate lane that was built for all those houses?
This lane is just for these, it was for this residence here that's being sold at It's access for this property, this property, this property, and this property, and this property.
Okay. So it was designed to, to take care of those five homes?
Yes.
Those five parcels?
Yes. Well, yeah, yes, yes, that's true.
Are there further questions from councilors? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, in regard to the drainage, is that a septic field you're talking about for drainage field?
Yes, it is.
And do they have an easement with the adjacent property owner?
I assume so. I haven't seen the easement, but this property here is owned by Hans Van De Wyden, and his son built this home and put, and he didn't have room for a drain field, so he, they built a drain field here for that residence.
Okay. It'll be interesting to follow that development.
Are there further questions?
Sure.
Counselor Clem?
Yeah, thank you. What's it like getting, you're heading north, you're going home from downtown West Salem, you're heading north on Wallace. What's it like to turn right onto your lane? What's the traffic?
You would think, you would think that would be an easy movement, but you'd be surprised how many times we get waved at with one finger and horn honks, just for slowing down and making a legal right-hand movement. The, the traffic on northbound in the morning is atrocious, because most generally at 8:00, traffic is backed up from the bridges at, at, Tidewater, what's the name?
Glen Creek.
No, Edgewater, Edgewater, thank you, had a brain dump. From Edgewater to my driveway and past my driveway at times, but typically, typically it's where you see this right in here, it's typically backed up to here every morning on, on a weekday.
Okay, thanks.
Are there further questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your coming down.
Just a second.
All right, we now go back to the applicant for rebuttal. Oh, we do questions for staff first. All right, questions for staff. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to understand this, Glenn. The way this is done is, it is by the size of the street, not the capacity of the street. Is that it? It's just a measurement, not a, an ability, a carrying capacity for the street?
That's correct.
Does, does that work? I mean, do you see, I mean, you hear the testimony, do you hear what my problem is with that?
The code provision requires, in this case, a 34-foot wide street intended to serve essentially two, two lanes of traffic and room for pedestrian and bicycle. That's, that's more or less what the 34-foot width would allow, and that is all that's required for any development under this code, with minor exceptions.
Yep. I'm just curious, I, it doesn't relate to the, is there a, is there a shortfall in our code that we're not now dealing with capacity of some of these major arterials to handle? Although they're big enough, the way they, the way traffic flow occurs just can't be handled?
Well, those kind of impact needs come up in later development approvals. The site plan review processes and the traffic impact analyses that come with those, really get more to those issues later.
So this will occur later? We'll get to talk about this capacity issue, and lights, and speed limits, and left turns, and U-turns, all that'll come with the development?
Those come with criteria later, yes.
Okay, that's not part of this?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Nanki. And I'm getting this echo behind me here just for a second. And, okay, I think I understand. One other, the speed limit. I mean, I, we lowered the speed limit on Highway 22 up through Mill City and Gates to 40 miles an hour, and we can't lower an hour, and we can't lower this from 45 to 35? And these are two little towns that needed a speed trap? And we can't get this down to safe speeds?
I would defer that to- that's not my expertise. And Mr. Bechtel?
Mark Bechtel, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Speed limits are set by the state, by the State Speed Control Board. What ODOT will do is they will receive petitions by the city or other entities, and they would look to see if anything has changed on that highway since the speed was last set. So for example, as more development occurs and there's more traffic, there's more pedestrian crossings, there's more things that might warrant a lower speed limit, they would then, as part of their speed study, take that into account.
Have we ever petitioned to lower the speed out there as development is occurring?
Not in that particular stretch of highway. They actually lowered it when they built, when they widened Wallace Road. At that point, it was almost 55 miles an hour, so they took it to 45. They did their own speed study back in 1999.
Okay.
And it was put at 45. And given the land use that's out there now and the areas that are undeveloped, to the state, that's an appropriate speed limit. As development occurs out there and traffic conditions change, a petition to ODOT would be warranted.
And we would make that petition?
We could do that. The highway department itself could do it, or other entities could ask-
But we could do it?
We could petition-
So the neighborhood group doesn't have to do all the paperwork? I mean, can we help them out or do it ourselves to get this?
The Neighborhood Association could, you know, ask the city, on the city's behalf, to petition ODOT.
Because what's being described, I guess what I find of concern is this description. What it feels like is you've got a whole bunch of very slow traffic at various times of the day with people bombing in at 55 miles an hour and in and out of the city. And that it just sounds really with pedestrians crossing, it's like the perfect storm for someone to get hit. Counselor Clem and I, when we were walking in, were talking about these flashing yellow lights that were mentioned earlier. And that they really represent memorials to dead pedestrians is what they amount to who have been hit. And I, for one, would like to see those go up as a, you know, if possible, ahead of the game. But this feels like we're maybe setting up, you know, a pretty guaranteed warrant. And as I think people understand, a warrant is somebody- there's an accident has occurred, right, to get a warrant?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
It could be-
It could be.
...be a warrant, but-
It's a big warrant then.
When I say warrants, those are stipulated conditions that warrant or make a reason for something to change. Traffic signals are warranted. Certain conditions are met that then make it logical and legal to have a traffic signal. Same thing with speed. You meet certain warrants, certain conditions exist that then justify lowering a speed. And so what I'm saying is that as development occurs out here and traffic conditions change, becomes more congested, or pedestrians, that then warrants lowering the speed limit. What you have out here now is you're literally involved in a transition. As these properties begin to develop, the conditions will change and there will be that transitionary period where things don't feel right. But when those warrants are there, then ODOT would look at lowering the speed limit.
Okay. And those are things, as Glenn points out, we'll talk about as part of the development discussion rather than at this point in this part of the process. Do I understand that?
The speed limit is not typically a condition of approval for a subdivision or a site development review. That is something that you as a council, the Neighborhood Association through staff, would have to ask ODOT to examine.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Councilor Cannon and then Councilor Nanke.
Just a clarification from staff following up on Councilor Bennett's comments. All of these decisions that we're talking about subsequent to this are all staff decisions which don't come to the council even on an appeal basis. Is that correct? Am I not correct?
If I may, Vicki Hardenwood, Community Development Director. It depends on the application themselves. In this case, part of this property is inside the city limits and part of this property is outside the city limits. The portion outside the city limits will come to you to make a decision about whether it should be referred to the voters to be annexed. The other factor that can influence this is if just the portion that's already in the city limits is proposed to be developed. It depends on whether the actual application for that trips the number, the threshold for requiring a higher level of review, which we would call a Type 2 review, that would make it eligible to be called up by the council. And that depends on the specifics of the application. Probably the two biggest factors here are whether or not it's going to generate enough trips to require a transportation study. I think in this case, it would not. And the other factor is whether or not it can meet the design standards or design guidelines. If it meets standards, which means it meets certain objective, specific requirements, it would not be eligible to come to review if it doesn't. And they go through the more discretionary guidelines review, then that's a decision that is made by the Planning Commission and is appealable by you. It can be appealed to you. So it depends on the specific application. It's possible that this site could develop without having an opportunity for council review.
Most likely.
Councilor Nanke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still down here.
I know. I see.
Question, and I know with the criteria, I have no problems with them. Piece that just jumps out at me is the chunk that jumps out into the middle of Wallace Road. And what is its actual status? And if that lane is actually inside of the yellow boundary, those properties still have to be able to have access to the south, correct?
Yes, if I understand your question, the- speaking of the drive aisle on the south line?
The piece that comes all the way out into the median of Wallace Road is part of that lane that I think the one speaker was discussing?
Yeah, I mean, that is- if you look at a photo of the site, that does not- Wallace Road is not omitted here at this location. That's a tax map has drawn the line that way. So I don't, standing here, know how the title, how the deed is written for this property. So Wallace Road functions normally there. And there's a driveway-
It just seems strange stubbing out to the middle of Wallace Road. And why is that theirs? I'm assuming it belongs to this gate?
It's in the county, so it is county property. And that is part of the permit application with ODOT for that driveway.
And the other piece of that is, if that is in fact that lane, we can't landlock those other properties to the south?
Yeah, they will share the same driveway, all the properties to the south with this apartment complex.
All right, Councilor Dickey?
I have a couple of questions. One, just talking about the possibility of lowering the speed limit, has it ever- I mean, do they ever make that decision based on, we've got a lot of developable property here. It seems like to develop it and then have the problems, as we have discussed, seems like a little bit backwards from how it should be. Does it- I mean, is ODOT ever proactive in this? Or is it always a kind of the other way around? Does that make sense?
Mark Bechtel again. Counselor, ODOT uses the same method that is used nationwide, and as they look at what's called the 85th percentile speed, which is under normal conditions, what is, you know, what do 85% of the people drive at? And so regardless of how they might perceive the law or anything else, so basically the 85th percentile speed for that area is 45 miles an hour. And that's what they said, that's the study that they conducted back in 1999. That's what it was said at. What we were talking about previously is as conditions change, that 85th percentile speed may lower. And then you could successfully petition to have the speed limit lowered as well.
Councilor Dickey, follow up?
Yes. Actually, this is regarding the annexation of the property that's in the county. Can you just kind of explain a little bit how that will work in terms of, you know, understanding that property needs to be annexed before it's developed, that portion of it, if I'm understanding right, if I understood right? And what if it's not annexed? Does it just sit there and not get developed until said time that, you know, the voters say, yeah, we want to annex this property?
I guess I can speak- I do know that the applicant has filed an application to construct Phase 1 of the property inside city limits now. So without annexation, that would be the entire development. So the Phase 2 would come with the annexation.
Likely that the property that's outside the city limits would not develop intensely at all unless it was annexed.
Councilor Claussen and then Councilor Bennett?
Sorry, first I have a couple remedial questions for the city attorney. This is a newbie counselor talking here. We're in a quasi judicial hearing right now, am I correct?
That's correct.
So do we deliberate after the applicant's rebuttal?
General, yes.
Okay, that shapes my question then. So my one and only question right now then is for staff. The recommendation, Glenn, you had mentioned that staff really likes the idea of the, I believe it was the sanitary sewer connection to the east as opposed to the west. But staff is proposing the planning, or the hearings officer's decision, which includes a pump station to the west is- do you understand?
The applicant requested to go connect to Linda Lane-
Okay.
-by a pump system.
Okay.
And so essentially, that doesn't, we didn't believe that was something we would deny based on criteria. However, it is really more of a benefit to the area to connect to the east. And particularly in the context of having to use eminent domain to go get an easement, it would be much more effective to go to the east.
Okay, so I guess my question might be to the applicant when he comes back for his rebuttal, why not go to the east? And is the staff recommendation really asking us to change the piece to go to the east? Or is it not really that big a deal?
Staff, if the applicant cannot negotiate with the property to the east but can negotiate with the owners of Linda Lane, then the staff recommendation is that they would be able to go to Linda Lane with that connection.
Okay, so if we approve the UGA, you know, say we just approve staff recommendation, which is approving the hearings officer decision, we're not locking him into having to go to Linda Lane?
No.
And we're not locking him into saying, this is where we want you to go? Can you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, he has two options.
Okay. So I'm wondering how we could help push to the east if that's the better method? So, and that might be more for the applicant if he wouldn't mind commenting on that.
Counselor, just for clarity purposes, this decision did not go through the hearings officer. It's a staff decision directly appealable to the council.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Councilor Bennett?
I wanted to just clarify for myself too, this sewage question. So 42-inch main on the east side and an 8-inch on the west side, does this use up then the capacity of wherever is available on Linda Lane? I mean, is that sort of foreclosed Linda Lane for anything else? I'm not sure. Is 8-inch the magic number? Is that the deal?
An 8-inch has a tremendous capacity.
Okay.
It can serve, I believe, up to 300 homes roughly.
Okay.
So it's, there's really not a capacity probably.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Glenn, is Linda Lane a privately owned drive or is that a public street?
It's a privately owned drive.
So that property owner still, regardless of, if the applicant has both options, the owner of that private drive could just say no to any hookup there? Would that require the city to then be in the position of having to declare eminent domain? If the property owner of Linda Lane said no?
The property owner of Linda Lane has already expressed a concern in the file that they've objected to, at least have not granted that easement yet. So it would be almost certain that if that was not negotiated, that the eminent domain would go to the east.
Okay. Can you help me understand the Phase 2 and its relationship proximity to the future Marine Drive?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Phase 2 is the parcel on the southeast corner.
So none of this connects to the future Marine Drive at all?
No.
Okay. And the drive to the north of the subject property, what is that line that we're seeing on the photograph? That line right there?
That is a driveway that is used for the neighboring property. And I believe here for some of the back property is not, does not benefit the subject property in any way, as far as I know. I would defer to the-
Is there a reason why staff doesn't direct the applicant to use that as the access point for this property?
It is not, I guess I'd say, if they were able to acquire an easement for that, I don't think we would have, I don't know that we'd object to it. It's really be part of the ODOT permitting process with the driveway to see if it was allowable use for the driveway. But there would be no reason why we would deny that.
Okay. And help me understand, describe physically and simply if you can, a right-in, right-out. When I think of right-in, right-out, I think of the one at Walgren's at Westgate Shopping Center. You know, is that essentially what 108 apartment residents will be coming in and going out of just a simple one lane right-in and a simple one lane right-out?
It is a simple one lane right-in and right-out. It is what's called a pork shop, if you've seen the shape of it.
Sure.
It turns drivers to the north so they wouldn't be able to make a left turn and kind of cheat that median. That's the shape of it.
And when they're on a 45 mile an hour road, is that a safe turn to be doing such a small right-in, right-out when the traffic is at least 45 miles an hour? Would you take that right-in, right-out at Walgren's at 45 miles an hour, Glenn?
(laughing)
You don't have to answer that.
Yeah, really?
Okay. Do we have any more questions for staff from councilors? All right, then it's now time for the applicant's rebuttal. There he is. And you have five minutes.
Okay, we've dealt with a few issues on this property. First off, I'd like to talk about sanitary sewer. And I, you guys brought up some good concerns about Linda Lane. And I understand as far as that 8-inch sanitary inland of Lane, that is an option for us to go to as far as crossing Wallace. That's one issue as far as serving the rest of those houses. If we do bring sanitary into that area, other people will be able to connect as far as those three houses on the south side. And I think the city and the community will be better served if we go to the east. So by going that direction, you know, the city gets their needs met too and is able to use that for those three houses to the south. Otherwise, that's not going to be an option. And we will be tapping into that 8-inch, which is pretty well-used by the existing facility and houses on that side of the street. So I think that is probably an issue that the city's going to want to address and you guys, council members, will want to address tonight. As far as traffic, I think we've, you know, this development has probably brought to the forefront some issues on Wallace Road that have existed. I know our development, that I developed to the north there, we did do traffic studies because we met certain trip generation levels there, which this development is smaller and doesn't meet those needs. And there is concern, having talked to the folks at ODOT, you know, they are willing to entertain an application. And I think the city needs to deal with that. As a developer, you know, I realize that there's these issues here. What I'd like the city and all the council members to do is- What I'd like the city and all the council members to do is, tonight is approve my development. And as far as the city infrastructure, that's an issue that, I think that's going to be a long process and I think the city needs to deal with it and outside of this land use development. And I just would appreciate that being dealt with separately. So those are my comments. Councilman.
Counselor Cannon.
I think you've got a good development. I'm very supportive of it. I just want to advise staff that to the properties to the south, if that's an extra ordnance, if it's an extraterritorial extension of sewer or water, I'll be opposed to that. So unless those properties are annexed. Thank you.
Other, other comments or questions by council? Yes, Counselor Clem.
Hans, the, the subject property, the frontage along Wallace that's in the picture before us, do you have access to any part of that subject property or has ODOT or city staff directed that you enter in on that, that lane? Why couldn't access be at multiple points along that western boundary of the subject property? What's constraining you from considering a better in and out along Wallace?
Keith, my civil engineer, I'm going to have addressed that and then I have a couple comments after he's done.
Mayor, counselors, my name's Keith Wissenhut. I'm with Project Delivery Group and, and we are providing civil engineering and planning services for the applicant.
Can you speak up into the microphone?
I'm sorry, I've seldom been accused of being outspoken.
Yes, you are. Okay.
With regard to the question that Counselor Clem raised, there are currently three driveway access locations along the frontage. One for nineteen eighty, one for nineteen fifty, and one that exists at the proposed location that services the four homes and is actually a strip of land that's owned in fee by the developer. The, the DOT wanted to consolidate and minimize access locations and so they required the closure of those other two with, with this, with, with the approval of the application for the, the location where it's currently been approved.
Okay, so that, they sort of directed that the access point be right where it's been proposed or applied for?
Actually, I, I certainly don't want to mislead anyone. They wanted an access that would be clearly right in, right out restricted. They didn't want to have people be able to cheat a left turn. They didn't say where it needed to be, but they did say that it needed to be right in, right out, and they did say there needed to be access consolidation.
Okay, so it could be, I guess the question for the applicant is, could the access point be further north proximate to that lane that's there now at the northwestern edge of the subject property?
And.
Where it's flat and there's visibility for the traffic.
Well, there, there's certainly adequate sight distance at any point along there. The existing lane that you see on the photo is private property that accesses property that is under county jurisdiction. And there is also an access that is connecting to Wallace Road that is in process right now that is to the north of that private lane. And the, if, if the accesses could not be combined, then the thought was that there should be some separation between them. They shouldn't just be boom, boom, boom as you drive through there. And that the goal here was to create some separation between access locations there that would allow for traffic to weave whenever people wanted to make turns.
Thanks.
Are there further questions of the applicant?
I have two things I wanted to say.
All right, hearing none.
I would like to, I wanted to comment regarding this. That access on the, on the south of this property that I own, if that's left as a private drive and we move it over, it does affect my development. The other thing is, is it puts two access ways. I'm eliminating, right now there, I have three curb cuts on Wallace and I'm eliminating two of them, which is a big issue for Wallace. And we're going to have, you know, the private lane is going to be turning right there and to the north as we're coming out of these, the apartment residents are turning right. And also, right now, cars are able to come up and turn left, cars that are southbound can make a left turn into Linda Lane. It's signage that says no U-turn, but they can link a left lane. If that's not turned into a right in, right out, cars will, you know, traffic from this apartment community can come, do a left turn there and then go into the apartment community. So as far as safety wise, you're, by moving it to the north, you're greatly increasing the hazards and by leaving two curb cuts. So you won't be able to force the right in, right out and you'll increase, there'll be a lot of U-turns right there. So, any other questions?
Other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, the public hearing is now closed.
Counselor Clem, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move staff recommendation and then I'll explain why.
I'll second it.
Who seconded? Counselor Bennett, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Bennett. And is there discussion, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neighborhood Association did oppose it. They think it's a good development. It's zone multifamily for, well, for the most part, part of it is. West Salem has a responsibility for helping the city meet its housing goals. This is one of them. The development is a good one. If it made sense to require that the property drainage be diverted to the east, I would have put that in my motion, but I'm not sure it makes sense to run more stormwater down toward the river. That slough is all along the river, between the river and what you see for future Marine Drive, everybody's draining their property there. We're not really increasing our quality of life by directing water to go down into that slough. Everybody drains down into that slough. Even, even south of this location or a number of horse ranches down in that lower ground, then I'm not sure it makes sense to, to direct an applicant to direct their stormwater to further pollute the river. So I'm, my motion does not include a direction as Counselor Nanki was inquiring about and Counselor Claussen was as well. But I think the issue for me is, the problem is Wallace. And the problem is, we have a separate jurisdiction in ODOT. If it made sense to hold up land use for transportation, I, I would do it in a heartbeat because I'll tell you, the next accident that happens down Wallace, I'm going to move for speed bumps. I will, I will tell you that I have worked with ODOT and inquired on a couple of occasions that pedestrian signage be improved. All those kids now in those apartments, they're all within a mile of Harrah Elementary and they all have to run across Wallace. So I would ask that the council, in separate action as recommended by the Neighborhood Association when they make the recommendation, join me in petitioning the ODOT Speed Board to turn Wallace into a, a, a safety zone. Not a safety corridor for the listening ODOT audience, but a safety zone for pedestrians. ODOT believes that that single right in, right out is sufficient for that apartment, doesn't rise to the level of warrants. Neighborhood Association feels it's a good development. We have rules in place and sometimes, counselors, we run into things that, wow, I wish we had a rule or I wish we didn't have a rule. Being government, we tend to create more, but it doesn't make sense to penalize this one property owner. I would tell you, I would love to just stop it all until we fix Wallace. And there may be some counselors that still vote no on this, but I, I'm not willing to hold up what is planned for that area simply because of our lack of jurisdiction of the driveway. It's ODOT's driveway. But I would ask that you join me and that staff effort be committed to helping to petition lowering the, not only lowering the speed zone, but improving pedestrian safety greatly. We just saw the walk bike plan draft earlier tonight and we discussed this earlier, but Wallace Road is going to have to go from being a state highway for fast movement to a state highway for careful movement. And I'm not sure it's fair to penalize an applicant who's followed the rules because of that problem.
Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Claussen.
I want to second the remarks from Counselor Clem. This is one of those situations where I, we would have no grounds to say no. There are just no room here and fortunately or unfortunately, there is no room here to say no under the development code. This is the, the applicant has done everything he's supposed to, all the criteria are met. There is no, it, you just can't. But we do have an opportunity when the development arrives, I think, to at, and between now and then to talk with staff about the issues particularly involving Wallace. I am extremely sympathetic to the comments from Mr. Shai. The description he gives is exactly what I think we all face that I, that take right turns off state highways where you have to pull over, go slow, and somebody decides to honk at you and wave. And I, I know exactly what you're describing and it is enormously frustrating and that's the, they're really, I think, ODOT really represents the, the folks that need to, to take on their responsibility when they're going, when they have a, a highway going through such a populated area that is just going to get more populated. And the one thing I've learned when you, when you start representing West Salem, I always listen closely to what Counselor Clem said and as I get ready to start representing a little further down Wallace Road, the one thing you see is when people contact you, the list of things begin with Wallace Road. It begins and the list is fairly long as to the problems. And I'm looking forward to joining Counselor Clem and working on them and this one just strikes me as a real good place to start, if nothing else, helping to lower the speed limit out there and look at pedestrian safety. So this I just think needs to, to move along and we need to take on the, the underlying issues that are really here, which is the problems out there with traffic.
Counselor Claussen and then Counselor Clem.
Ditto that, I agree. I, I think my question was to the sanitary sewer, but you know, after I read the staff recommendation again and the requirements on the sanitary sewer, I think, I think we're doing good there, so.
Okay.
I'm well concerned about it, but I think staff's got it in hand.
Counselor Clem and then Counselor Tesler and then Counselor Dickey.
I make the motion, support this development reluctantly, but I do support it. I think, I want to further clarify that council may not see this application for this development. Again, if it's a Site One type plan review, it will be a building permit issued by staff. Council will likely see the annexation again and I would hope that, that we would look at this issue again if and when this property ever comes before us.
Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I wish I could vote no, but I'm not going to because this application has met all the criteria and so therefore I don't like it, but it has met the criteria. I do appreciate your comments about the slough. That slough does go into the back Wallace Marine Park and does connect to the river. I think it's inappropriate that we treat our sloughs as stormwater drainage systems, but that's of course another issue. I am puzzled by your comment about meeting the city's multifamily. From what I understand, this development is gated development. Usually people who are looking for affordable housing are not living in a gated development, but I don't want to make any socioeconomic judgments here. So I, I was just puzzled about meeting the quota of affordable housing there, but I, I'll leave that to understanding later.
Counselor Dickey, then Counselor Cannon.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I will vote in support of this because this property has met the criteria and it seems like a nice development. I am really concerned about the traffic here. And this just really seems very backwards to me that we, we fill it up when we know there are potential problems and then we go and beg to see if we can address the problems that we knew we were going to have to begin with. So, and that is not the developer's issue and, you know, so that is a separate issue we need to deal with, but that's very frustrating to me that that's the process that we have to go through and it seems a little bit counterintuitive if we're trying to get good developments in on our developable land. And then also I just want to echo what Counselor Cannon said earlier in terms of just the water service on this property. I would not support water service on the unannexed portion of this property.
Counselor Cannon and then Counselor Nanki.
Counselor Dickey just said what I was going to say, but let me emphasize it. This, I'm going to, I'm going to support to approve this application, but there is no inference or implied approval of extraterritorial extension of sewer and water to the properties to the south. That's just my statement. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and this has met all criteria. I think we all knew it met all criteria prior to coming here. We know there's significant concerns in regards to the transportation elements and we discuss them and whether or not anything comes back to us further down the road, I would encourage a counselor motion next general meeting to petition ODOT to, to attack Wallace Road and, and tell them we would really like to have more control of their facilities once they're within our municipal corporate boundaries. Because we're the ones that end up with the, the crap when somebody gets hurt. You don't see anybody, you know, going out and hitting ODOT up. They come to the city of Salem and it's running through our city and, and we need to have more control over those pieces that do.
Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two comments to the last suggestion for a council motion. I met with the Neighborhood Transportation Chair today, met with Nick, and he'd still like to work with Neighborhood Association proposing a variable speed limit based on how much congestion there is on the road and how much their use is. So I, I really kind of like the neighborhood to sort of make sure that they get input on that.
Good.
That, that whole idea because I think it's very innovative and I think it would be a great demonstration or pilot project for ODOT to consider. You, you, and they do it throughout the US, but the other comment that I want to make is I believe that, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, we have a requirement for so many acres of multifamily. I, I don't think we have a requirement based on affordable or, or, I, I wasn't meaning to imply that this was affordable. It's just the acreage of multifamily that was what my comment was directed to. So with that, I, I have no other comments.
All right. I believe we have a question on the floor. No further comments. It was moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Bennett to, to move the staff recommendation that city council affirm the preliminary declaration for urban growth area development permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now return on our agenda to the items that were pulled from the consent calendar, which feels like yesterday. So let's see where we are on that.
We are 4.3A.
We are, thank you. Here we are. We are 4.3A. And I believe that Counselor Cannon had pulled that item. Counselor Cannon, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Approve staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Cannon and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Counselor Cannon, do you have comments?
I do. I have a question of staff. What is the claim being made by the property owner in this case?
Counselor, I'd like to ask Glenn Gross, our planning administrator, to respond to that.
Counselor, I'd like to ask Glenn Gross, our Planning Administrator, to respond to that.
Glenn Gross, Planning Administrator, the claim, the Measure 49 claim is for nine residential lots.
To develop nine residential lots?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Further questions, further discussion? It's been moved by Counselor Cannon and seconded by Counselor Nanki, thank you. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 4.3B, and I do not have a note as to who pulled that one. Cannon, Bennett, Counselor Bennett did?
Yeah, Peter. I'll be acting as Peter's proxy. Counselor Fernandez, yes. I move the City Council designate Counselor Dan Clem to the State Capitol State Park World War II Memorial Review Committee.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon that we appoint Counselor Clem to the World War II Memorial Review Committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Clem. We appreciate your representing us with that memorial program. Thank you. All right, now we're at 4.3C. No, we didn't pull that one. 4.3D. We didn't pull one, that's right. 4.3D. And again, I don't know who it was who pulled that.
Counselor Dickey.
Counselor Dickey pulled that one. Counselor Dickey, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler to accept the staff recommendation. Is there a discussion, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, I just had a question for staff on this one. Because this is a little bit of a change in terms of how the 911 telephone tax funds have been distributed. I just wanted to be a little bit clear on how it's different from what we've done in the past. And the staff report says this change will benefit the public. And could you explain what that means?
Mayor, councilors, I'm Mark Buckholz, Director of the 911 Center. The, the change that's being proposed, or actually the interlocal agreement, is simply to do with the tracking of the 911 tax funds as they go from the state and are distributed to the actual service provider. So the 911 Center here in Salem, who contracts with Marion County and the area fire districts, there'll be actually no change in the amount of money that actually ends up contributing to the expense of running the 911 Center. It's simply a change in the flow of the funds. There was a determination by the state 911 program that the tracking wasn't clear and that the money needed to come when the state distributes to the county. The county either needs to provide the service or remit the money directly to the service provider. Salem and the Willamette Valley 911 Center is the service provider. The county shares part of that 911 tax with the fire districts that it delivers service with. And so the simple change is, the county was receiving the tax. A portion of that, they were sharing with the fire district. So they would give the money to the district, and then the district would submit it to the city. And the state said that clear distribution of the money needed to go from the county directly to the city. And all parties involved wanted to have it in writing clearly how it was going to happen. So the interlevel, interlocal agreement was put together, says clearly how the money will flow. That's the, in a nutshell, that's the change we're talking about.
Thank you. All right, are there further questions? All right, it was moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler to accept the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item of business, our special, our unfinished business, and we have none. And so we'll move to information reports. Does anyone have questions of staff regarding the three information reports on the agenda? Counselor Clem?
Now, just want to state that, by way of disclosure, that I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Community Action Agency. So again...
Thank you, Counselor Thomas?
I concur, I'm also a board member, so I want to disclose that.
Okay, thank you. All right. We now move to ordinances. We have no first readings, but we have a second reading. Would the recorder please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 3211, vacating a portion of Valley Rideaway located along the north property line of Pioneer and City View Cemeteries. Counselor Thomas? Yeah, your name? Counselor Cannon?
Just checking in.
Counselor Cannon? Counselor Clem? Counselor Bennett? Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki? Counselor Clausen? Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right? With one abstention? I don't have to do anything? Well, how easy is this? All right. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment at this time? No, we don't. And I have no mayor's items, and we have no councilor's items. The meeting is adjourned, and we have an executive session to follow in the Planning Department. Let's see, it's here on the agenda. It is, the Community Development Conference Room.